Ready, everybody? Good to go? Good, okay. All right. Good evening. It is Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. This is the time and place set aside for the committee meeting of the Board of Directors of the Northern Lebanon School District for August. We are meeting as a committee of the whole. I would like to announce before we get started to the agenda is that the board met an executive session on Tuesday, July 25th, 2023 to to go over the superintendent's annual performance review. I subsequently met with Dr. Messinger on Friday, July 28th, to give him that review. And the public version of Dr. Messinger's performance review is posted on the district website as of the same day, July 28th. I called this meeting to order this evening. First item on the agenda tonight, do we have any presentations, Brad? No presentation, so we'll move right into public comment. I understand that we do have one person that wishes to address the board, Mr. Murphy. And I know that you are very well familiar with the drill, so I won't run through it. Four minutes. Your time will start when you state your name. Thank you.
Joe Murphy, 19 Wildflower Circle, Lebanon, Pennsylvania. I have two students in the in the district. I'm gonna start with a couple of questions. I'm here to talk about the facility locker room bathroom policy. Is there a-
Pardon me, is your mic on? Is the is the button raised? Button should be raised, and I won't count that time. Yeah, just maybe get a little closer to the mic.
There you go. Better. All right. Is was there a count yet of how many single use bathrooms there are?
I'll just let you finish when we when we get to that agenda item, we'll address your your questions to the degree we can.
So I still have three concerns. My my first one is I think this policy separates students. It doesn't bring them together as a community. You have in your vision statement that you want the community to be able to go out into the world and be great citizens. And separating them and having an us and them mentality with the facility doesn't do that. It does these students harm when they leave the district. My other concern is just pure logistics of it. You have a brand new school opening in a month. Thousand new students in that school, new teachers, new spaces that they're teaching in, no one's ever been there. That's going to be a lot on the superintendent's plate. It's going to require most of his attention. And to drop this policy in his lap right before the school's school year starts, you'll have to train the faculty, you'll have to train the staff on the policies. That's a lot of work. You'll have to figure out which bathrooms are going to be the the gender identity bathrooms. My other concern logistics wise is I don't think you have enough single use bathrooms. I I saw it says in the policy in construction and things like that, but that's not for September. You know, that's maybe a year, two years down the road. So to have a policy that says there are single use bathrooms, and now we don't have them for two years, maybe? If you're lucky? I don't even know how it's feasible. I don't know how you can have a policy that says you have something and you don't have it. My other concern was training. When I was at the meeting in July, I asked specifically, have you had training on the needs of transgender students? And the answer was no. And that's really, really concerning to me. Because I watched you all struggle mightily working through that policy on really, really basic concepts that could have been answered in a two hour training. So I don't understand when you've had three months why there's been no training done. That that really, really concerns me as a parent. That's a lot of time. And what have you done? So I I feel you're putting the cart before the horse with this policy. You have to wait till you have the facilities. I thought we had a great discussion about the facilities, but as I'm sitting there, I'm like, we don't have these facilities. We're like, how are you going to have a policy that says single use bathroom? And no student can use it? Because if you pass the policy, I guarantee the first day, I'm going to ask my student, where were the single use bathrooms? How easy were they to get to? And if the answer is they weren't easy to get to, I wasn't able to use them in time to get back to class. I'm going to have a really, really big concern.
Good.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Appreciate your comment. Okay, we'll move to the items for discussion for this committee meeting tonight. Item five is obviously the approval of minutes, and then I'll turn it over to to Mr. Reese for 5.2, 5.3, and all the items following.
Thank you. Item 5.2 is the standard approval for the student activity account. Item 5.3 is for cash disbursements. I believe Leanne has a note to make about an upcoming expense, just to make the board aware.
Correct. So there's two items that we are considering putting forward for a capital expense. One is obviously the necessity of repairing the air conditioning system as we're currently sitting in a room that's rather warm. We did get one quote back for that. And it is the tune of $427,000 to repair the air conditioning system here. Now, that's not just the repair, it's actually putting in like a new system, some new ventilation. And I don't speak this language, so I apologize for that. But it's basically doing what would be done if we were doing construction so that we're not doing something and then ripping it out and redoing it. So that's why it's so costly, and then we wouldn't have to do that section during construction. Since it was storm damage, we believe lightning struck it. We did submit that to our insurance, and I'm waiting to hear back if any of it's covered. And if not, any of it or what portion of it. So once we get that back from insurance, we will let you know that as well. And another item is the lighting that needs to be done in the auditorium. There's some rewiring that needs done. And the estimate for that is in $355,000 from Pittsburgh stage. Mason is working, he was, that is a Co-Stars pricing. However, Co-Stars is just a maximum pricing. So we are going out to get another quote just to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and finding a very competitive price for that. So Mason has met with somebody else that's come in and looked at it, and we're waiting to hear back on their quote to determine which one we will go with. But I wanted to let you know about those two expenses. And obviously, we have money set aside for capital projects. If you recall, in June, we assigned, there's a million dollars in that right now. So this would be coming out of those funds for these two expenses.
Thank you. Are there any questions about number five? Moving on to-
Hold it. Yeah, I do, actually. So Leanne, you said $427,000 for the air conditioning unit.
Sorry, it's not just the unit. It's getting, and I have the quote here, you can look at it, and I'm sure Mason could come in and give us more information on it. But it's doing, what do you call it? The ventilation, help me out, Brad.
The ductwork.
Yes, the ductwork, that is the word. So it's more than just the unit on the roof. It is the actual work and repairing it. And then, like I said, when they do construction, they won't have to come back and do this part. So it would actually be a save, not not a savings, because it would be done anyway, but it wouldn't, we wouldn't be redoing this part. We wouldn't be spending this money again during construction. It is something that we would be doing during construction anyway.
So does it work out dollar for dollar that $427,000 would be removed from the HVAC renovation?
That's a great question, and I've asked that, and we haven't gotten back like a final answer yet for that, because I'm assuming that there's always savings when you're doing volume and things rip apart anyway. And not a say, it's cost less, so.
How many months during the year do we typically run the air conditioning in here?
How many months per year? I mean, I'm just gonna say the spring and summer and partially the fall, and we start. I'm gonna go with the standard like April through September.
So so we don't have heat either?
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Brad.
It's a joint system, so it serves both heat and air.
It's a required repair. We need to get it done. I just waiting to see, hopefully, some insurance money will come in and help with that.
Okay. And then my last question, well, two questions regarding the auditorium lighting. So what's what's the current conditioning of the lighting now? Do we not have lights in the auditorium?
Apparently, they flicker and don't work properly because a lot of the electrical wiring is just older and has been manipulated and redone and a lot. Am I explaining that correctly? So it's not as effective and-
Sure, it's specifically the stage lights and the house lights that we're referring to. So these are the lights that are used during concerts and performances. It's not what you'd use when you have a study hall in the auditorium, but it's it's that type of performance lighting. Been on the list as a problem for a while.
And then the follow up question is, was that considered as part of the proposed renovation? Separate altogether?
We knew it was going to need to be done and that it probably needed to be done sooner than it would have with construction. So we did pull it out of the construction plan as something we wanted to cover this summer. I think during budget time, Gary and I had told you guys that we wanted to do this sooner rather than later. It's the way it's been explained to me, I know I don't have all the language down, is it's a necessity at this point to have that lighting repaired in there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sorry to hog. No. Any feeling that we need to have this on discussion, or do we leave it on the consent?
This actually isn't an item on the agenda. It'll be approved. It's not on here to be spent, but it would be approved through the cash disbursements after we we pay for the for the services to be done. So right now, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, let you know this was happening. It isn't a side fund, so the Gary and I could go ahead and move these. But since it's such a large dollar amount, we wanted to definitely bring it to your attention. And if you had any feedback, please give us to that, give it that to us before we move forward with these.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Number six, budget and finance. The first item there, 6.1 is an annual agreement with Lebanon County Head Start. That's to host the Head Start classrooms in the elementary school. They'll have two specific classrooms in the new elementary school. 6.2 are is an educational agreement between Northern Lebanon School District and Beacon Light Behavioral Health Systems. This is a special education placement, as well as the items that are listed in 6.3, which include new story, wood services, and yellow breaches. Again, all special ed placement agreements. 6.5 is the annual approval of bus drivers, which we hope to see grow as the year progresses. The last time I checked, I believe we were short one full time position, but we know that that ebbs and flows during the year. So it's a great place to be to start. And then 6.6 is the annual approval of bus stops with the understanding that we know that that changes as new students come into the district or students leave, and we no longer need a bus stop. Are there any questions about number six items?
Just as a point of order, it looks like we skipped 6.4. So for next week, probably move those up.
In the numbering, we missed 6.4 in sequential order. All right, moving on to-
I I have I have some, just hopefully, there're just more more clarifications for myself. But the 6.2, the ESA, are we actually obligating any money? Or are we just sort of doing a contract or fee for services?
Right now, we have a student there, but they are slated to come back. So I don't think we do have any money that we need to send, but we have a meeting about that in a couple of weeks. So that agreement was sent before we knew the student was returning.
Okay. All right. And then the other question I had was was about 6.3 with the yellow breaches. In reading the contract, if I'm reading this correctly, because I, part of the lease agreement was that we were to get free spots, but then I see we're paying them a lot of money anyway. So can you clarify that for me, please?
It's it's still reduced. It's still a reduced rate. We are receiving some some spots from them, but it is reduced. I don't know, Leanne, if you want to talk more about that, I would-
Well, it just it just says that there's five secondary academic placements at a per student rate of almost 32,000, and then two elementary academic places placements at a rate of just over 36. And then one incentive placement at zero, and five academic places are paid via the terms of the sale agreement.
Yeah, yeah. So that so normally, they do 12 plus one spots. So at a at the same cost. So we're receiving basically half off.
Okay.
Position.
Okay. And do we have students enrolled there currently? We have total, do you know?
We have. It changes every day for, because some of the students have moved out today. Seven to eight. Probably, we will use all those spots.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions under budget and finance?
Can I can I just follow up on that? Kelly, the so it works out to essentially being half off once you factor in the five that are compensated?
Yes.
But if we only have eight, are the first five compensated?
So yellow breaches contracts don't work the way that you would think they do. You pay for all the spots because you have those spots. I can get you an exact number of students, but I'm in works with student, like we have students who want to drop out. We've had three students move that had it. When we originally did the contract, all of those spots were filled. But now we've had students leave, but you want to keep those spots because if not, you won't have, I won't have placements for students during the year. So it doesn't, they don't really go by, these are your hat, like your free spots or not. It's just you pay for the total of spots.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're getting the full benefit of the bargain.
Yes.
Okay, great.
So essentially, we're paying for them whether we use them or not.
Correct, yes. At a much lower rate than we were last year.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven, buildings and grounds. First item is facility use, 7.1 for Jonestown Dance Studio. You'll notice that the language has been that states contingent upon the acceptance of the conditions of the proposed facility rental policy, which is later in the agenda to be discussed and voted on. And then 7.2 is a monitoring services agreement. This agreement actually was already executed by the district but needs board approval. This was one that was required in order for us to move along with the elementary school. So this is elementary school fire alarm monitoring services, similar to an agreement that we have with the Field Housing Concession Stand. Unfortunately, it is with two different companies, so we're entering into another agreement. But that's the way the contract documents work, that we got one year of monitoring from the provider. Are there any questions about items in number seven?
I just, one clarification, if you mind. For the dance studio request, what group? Do they fall into what category?
I'd have to get back to you on that one. I I don't know the groups well enough off the top of my head without looking. I don't know if anybody else does. I would suppose a group three, but I I'm not positive on that, Leanne. Do you know?
I have to look them up too.
Yeah. We can get.
I I believe that they're a group four because they're for profit. Or no, I don't know. Does anyone know? Are they nonprofit? Okay. They're nonprofit, then it's probably three, group three.
They're not, they're not a nonprofit.
They are for profit, then it's group four. Yep.
Any other questions under seven? Okay, moving on to number eight, volleyball coach. And that is to approve Jessica Fry as the junior high girls volleyball head coach. Moving on to number nine, curriculum. First item under number nine, 9.1, the final adoption of policy 707. This is the use of school facilities, which is what we just were referring to. 9.2 is the tentative adoption of three policies, policy 616, payment of bills, policy 617, petty cash, and policy 715, use of facilities by students. 9.3 is the retirement of a policy. And if you read the attachment, PSBA gives a great definition as to why that policy is up for retirement. Essentially, the content of the policy is covered elsewhere in more detail, and it's no longer needed. 9.4 is curriculum. We're excited to have in front of you the science curriculum K29 for approval, and in addition to biology. As you'll recall, the state standards are changing, and Northern Lebanon is ahead of the curve when it comes to aligning our standards or aligning our program to the new standards. And that's what this curriculum reflects. You may also recall that the science curriculum was developed under direction of the IU. They supported us greatly in making this this leap from where we were to where we're going. In addition, you'll see that agriculture is listed there, one of our strong programs. It was their year in the cycle to rewrite, and you'll see the results of their rewritten curriculum there. Upcoming in the future, we will also have health and PE for your adoption. It's not here tonight. It will not, I do not anticipate it to be on the board for next week, but it would likely be there for next month. Finally, under number nine, we have 9.5, the secondary student handbook. That's an adoption that includes the graduation requirement for our students that are attending CTC, which drops one, I believe it's one credit from their requirement for elective courses. Are any questions under number nine, curriculum?
I, oh, go ahead.
Go, Dr. Bucks.
Go ahead.
I have concerns, significant concerns over the proposed policy 715, the use of facilities by students. In March of 2023, we received information regarding the federal law Title IX legal obligations. And it was made very clear to us that the law prohibits schools from limiting a student's use of the bathroom of the gender with which they identify. Six circuit courts have made decisions regarding accommodations for transgender students. And prior to December 30th, 2022, all of them were in relative agreement that prohibiting trans students from using a bathroom of their of their gender identity violates federal law. All of them have ruled in favor of transgender protections under Title IX. On December 30th, only one circuit court, which was in Florida, has reversed its prior decision and limited bathroom use to biological sex. Our local federal court of the Third Circuit made a decision in 2018 that ruled that high school students have no constitutional right not to share restrooms and locker rooms with transgender students whose sex assigned at birth is different than theirs. So my question is, how is the policy as it is currently drafted legal? How does it? How is it in accordance with Title IX?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bucks. So all you correctly stated the state of the law as we understand it. And I also shared with the committee and the public during our committee meeting the same summary that you did. The difference here, as we understand it, is that this, well, first and foremost, this policy was provided to us by council. It is the opinion of our council that this that this that this policy comports with the state of the law right now. It does accommodate transgender students. It also makes an effort to accommodate all students, which is the understanding that at least the committee has as to the state of the Third Circuit law under the Boyer Town decision. So this policy does make specific accommodations for transgender students. It also attempts, as as we understand, the Third Circuit Court to have have opined that it also is important for us to make accommodations for every student that requires it. And this provides that carve out for all students.
I am no legal aficionado, but to me, it still does not seem like it would hold up in court. Brown versus the Board of Education in 1954 stated that separate but equal does not ensure equality. We are not ensuring equality for our students with this policy. Additionally, these policies would be harmful for the for students' mental health in many ways, both our trans students and our cis students. But tonight, I want to focus on how this policy is not practical. It is not practical for our facilities. We have limited facilities, often not in the best of conditions, not anybody's fault at this time, but we have an old building with very limited uses, very limited number of facilities, placement of facilities. And we're now going to divide those facilities in half, essentially. So students will not have readily have access to bathrooms that they feel comfortable in. So this is not practical in terms of location and time. And we're asking administration to create physical spaces that are not available in our school. We cannot practically offer an equal number or fair location or quality of bathrooms separated by gender identity and sex assigned at birth. This segregation, if we're being completely honest, it would be unequal. It would be unfair. Additionally, we have a very limited number of single use bathrooms that could be used by both cis and trans students. I would like to know numbers of how many restrooms do we have? Because those numbers will be essentially divided in half for the types of restrooms that students would be comfortable in. Additionally, this this policy pertains to locker rooms. We don't have multiple sets of locker rooms. How are we going to identify some locker rooms as gender identity locker rooms? And some locker rooms as sex sex assigned at birth? And additionally, how are we even going to monitor them? We can barely come up with enough faculty to monitor the locker rooms that we have now. We're going to have to double that number if we institute this policy. It's not practical for students. It's barely practical for students to use the restroom now. It's not practical for students. It's barely practical for students to use the restroom now when they walk through the crowded hallways to get from one class to the next in three minutes. Now, if we institute this policy, they will have to walk out of their way to a different hallway to use a bathroom in which they feel safe and comfortable. Policies like these cause students to delay or avoid using the restroom all day. There is evidence that policies like these cause dehydration and urinary tract infections in transgender students because they don't feel safe and they don't feel comfortable with policies like this. They have no restroom in which they've no accessible restroom in which they feel comfortable and safe using. So these policies, evidence shows us that these policies affect their physical health and their mental health. Additionally, gender identity and sex assigned at birth are things that are supposed to be confidential and not talked about with other students and only administration and faculty on a need to know basis. This policy would dramatically remove that confidentiality. Trans students may move into the as an example, trans students may move into the district and present as female and are accepted by their classmates as female. This policy would completely remove that confidentiality in a way that would be very detrimental to the student's mental health. Because in one hallway, if it's a sex assigned sex assigned at birth restroom, they will have to use the male restroom, and that is essentially outing that student. But time or practicality would prohibit them possibly from using a gender identity bathroom assigned as female. This policy with gender identity and sex assigned at birth bathrooms opens the door for inconsistency. So trans students may use a male bathroom in some hallways and be forced to use a female bathroom in others. So if one hallway is sex assigned at birth, if they were born as a boy, they would have to use the boys bathroom. In another hallway, if they're gender identity bathrooms and that student identifies as female, they are now going into a female bathroom. So they can essentially be mixing with both male presenting students and female presenting students. So this is going to cause incredible confusion for both students and teachers. And in the process, it would out students and completely violating their their privacy. This policy may force students who are living and present as males to use bathrooms with girls and for students who are living and present as females to use bathrooms with boys. This will create far more discomfort for all students, not only trans students, but cis students as well. It's confusing for students, teachers and administration. And reports and investigations of such scenarios would violate a trans student's privacy. Information regarding gender identity and sex assigned at birth should remain confidential, but this policy would force that to be open to discussion or question on a near daily basis. The bottom line is, trans students will be forced to use bathrooms where they feel unsafe. There will be much greater incidence of cisgender people attacking transgender people in bathrooms. There are schools, including local schools, that practice trans inclusive policies, and it does work for all students. Policies like we have proposed are harmful for students. But there can be policies that create a more inclusive and comfortable learning environment for all students. To me, this proposed policy feels very much like policies of racial segregation, invoking unwarranted fear of others and imposing judgment of others. With this policy, student accommodations would be separate, but definitely not equal in access, quality and safety. This policy in no way addresses the real issue, which is student privacy. In many ways, this will lessen student privacy and create more discomfort and more confusion.
Any other discussion, questions?
Yeah, I'll just. You know, I think the certainly the intent of this policy, I'll go back to it, is, you know, safety and privacy for all students, all students. Clarity for, you know, school officials, whether that's teachers, administrators, school employees, and then ultimately clarity for for parents. You know, as a as a parent of, I still have one child in the district. I can tell you that even sitting here, I'm prior to this, the clarity of what can and can't happen in our in our restrooms and locker rooms to me was unknown, you know, unclear. So I didn't feel doing nothing was was a good choice. There's no doubt this is not an easy policy to to write, to have clarity on, to be perfectly fair and and make sure everyone's happy with it. But I actually think what what came through, you know, it's not exactly what I would have wanted, but I think I think it does balance that a little bit. You know, the one challenge here is that, you know, there's there are multiple groups here and and to to assume that individuals that today today have other individuals walking into the bathroom with them doesn't make them feel uncomfortable is is not real either because because that is happening. And that's some of the outreach that's happened to me that, hey, I don't understand what the school policy is. Can this happen? And those individuals are certainly uncomfortable with with the situation as well. So, you know, while this policy may not be perfect, I and it will be difficult to to enforce as is. I think, you know, both administrators and parents and students needed something, some level of clarity to be able to understand what what the policy was, so that it was not just whatever, whatever an individual chooses. Lots of challenges, privacy, all the things that you brought up, Michelle. They are valid in terms of how do you facilitate this? But but there are plenty of cases where not doing something has created a a big stir and a legitimate division within school districts that, you know, my hope certainly is and still or was and still is that a policy like this would help to eliminate that or reduce that possibility. That's 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 what I've got.
Other discussion?
Sure. I was on the committee for this, and I think it is a difficult and challenging topic. And as Director Marlowe said, I think the easy option is pretty much to do nothing. I do feel like we have an obligation. My first concern is for the safety of all students. I think we have a moral responsibility as well as a legal obligation to provide a safe place for all the students in our district. And my hope is whether they feel like they're in the majority or minority, that none of them feels marginalized. I think they have a expectation that they are not marginalized. Secondly, I think it's extremely important that for those on both sides of this issue, that we as a committee, we didn't choose the terms of this. We were kind of given some pieces of the puzzle. I think it's our job to arrange those pieces in a way that's most positive for our district, mostly for the students who are the greatest asset. But as was mentioned, the the teachers, the parents and all those involved. And third, I think it's important that we not attach intentionality to the words and actions of others. We are, we are all part of the human family, and regardless of our experiences, there is much that we have in common. It is very easy for all of us to project our context onto others and then make pronouncements of judgment on those who don't agree with us. Unfortunately, that is the easy path that leads to division and chaos. It is clear that it is more difficult to be understanding with those who disagree with us, but it leads us to a better place for all involved, especially for the students here at N L. And as far as the specifics, I do think that we have to think long term. And I agree, we don't have a lot of single use facilities currently. I believe that's the solution for this long term because I don't think, as was mentioned, there are all sorts of challenges related to assigning different bathrooms and the confusion that goes with that. We are in the midst of renovation. I know it's going to be expensive to do a single use option, to do banks of of single use facilities. But I believe that would be money well spent. I would much rather spend the money proactively, taking care of our students. And if we don't talk about it, we're never going to get there. So I think this is kind of the impetus. This policy is not perfect, but I think it gets us moving in the right direction. And if we can come around that concept, I think we can allocate money and move in the direction that's going to be healthy for our students long term.
Director Murray?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what was said about the timing of it. And I I do wonder about the timing of this policy. I think it's good that we're having some discussion about it because of the renovations that are being proposed. And so, but I'm curious from those who from our administration, those who are going to have to implement it. You know, I hear words like logistics and facilitating, and I'm just wondering what is really doable. I don't want to, I want to put a policy into place that's going to be helpful and 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 bring clarity. I don't want to have a policy that is going to be difficult to implement. So I'm just, I think the timing of the discussion with with the building discussion is a is a good one to have. I just wonder about the timing of the policy being put into place if we're not fully able to implement it. I mean, that doesn't have to be answered right now from an administrative standpoint. I'm just just throwing it out there for further clarification.
Just so I understand your question, it's, is it reasonable to expect that the policy could be implemented for the start of the school year, given the building that we have to occupy? That's essentially the question.
That's my question. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The only thoughts that I have, I just wanted to clarify a few points. You know, I did share this with with the committee that and I think the committee all shares the point of view that this is, this is difficult. But I think in terms of timing, and I won't speak to the administration. We did provide it to the administration and we asked a feasibility question. To my knowledge, feasibility question was not raised, but it would be good between now and the the board meeting to have that information and data. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that I think the timing is important now because to our knowledge and the administration's knowledge, this is not targeted toward a specific student. So this is from our from our perspective, a an objective move that we can take to provide what I do believe is clarity for the district. I recognize the disagreement there, but I believe it does provide some clarity. One of the other things I just wanted to clarify is that this policy does not designate certain hallways or half and half. It doesn't do that. It delegates to the administration that determination. And in fact, in the committee meeting, we did discuss the possibility that perhaps the administration just designates one bathroom that's sex assigned at birth. That would mean that every other bathroom in the school would be a sex, it would be a gender identity bathroom, which in my point of view is is absolute accommodation. And it accommodates the other students as well. It's anecdotal, and I know I don't have a study that shows it, but it's anecdotal from talking with with secondary school students that they have chosen not to use the bathroom during the day in the past because of the concern that somebody else might be in the bathroom. So I think that that making this accommodation is truly a privacy accommodation for every student. Now, whether whether we agree with the point of view of any individual child or any individual family, that is, in my opinion, ultimately up to the family to make that determination and to and to teach the student based upon, you know, worldview issues. This policy was it was mentioned in public comment that the policy is intended to be a single use policy. At least that was my conclusion. I don't believe that's what the individual said. But I did want to clarify that the policy is not a single use policy. It is not a policy to assign single use bathrooms to the schools, but it is one that identifies that as a goal, as as an ideal goal. As I believe Director England said, that as we move forward with potential renovations of the secondary school, that we will make as much use of single use facilities as we possibly can. I do think some of the other concerns regarding confidentiality, feasibility of understanding to the to each student and faculty member as to what happens. I, my personal opinion is our current operations does not provide that clarity. And I think that this is a step that will provide clarity to all of the staff and faculty. It will require some training that that is for certain. But every year, we train our faculty and staff on on different policies. And I believe that the administration is fully capable of of performing that in time for the school year, if it is the school year that that we move forward. Oh, my last thought, too, I won't, you know, I won't give my legal analysis because I think that would be inappropriate, but I'll share my personal conclusion that I do not believe that this violates the separate and equal standard under the Fourteenth Amendment. Ultimately, that's for a fact finder to determine. That would be a court to determine that. But my conclusion is that is that it does not, that I think this sets us on on firm legal footing based upon advice of counsel. Thanks. Any other discussion?
I just have one additional comment. There was a lot said about clarity, and it was my understanding that our administration does currently have a clear protocol that they move through and talk through with students who identify as a sex, as the sex that was not assigned to them at birth. So procedurally, I am under the impression that there is clarity and how how our counselors, how our administration talk with students and work through where they feel most comfortable, what facilities are best for them. It is the public's clarity, but we know there are many issues in education that are not, that we don't broadcast to the public, like students in special education. We don't tell the public their special education plan and students' grades. We don't tell the public their grades, just like students' facility use. We shouldn't have to justify to the public why a student is using a certain restroom. If that's the type of clarity that we're talking about, I believe that's completely unjustified. But our our administration has been handling this quite well in accordance with Title Nine with the understanding that we had prior to this draft policy. And so I think this just unleashes more more confusion, not clarity.
Yeah, if I could just, if I could just comment, I I do think, I mean, there's a difference between whether it's sharing grades, those kind of things. I mean, one of the key components of this, and one of the reasons I think this item is coming up because and it's called out clearly in there in terms of the the facilities that we are addressing. It's that these are facilities where someone could be in a state of undress. That that, to me, as a parent, you know, you've got, you know, young, young boys, young girls from thirteen to eighteen. There needs to be some clarity around something like that that is different than some of those those other topics. And and that's why that's, that's why I think this this item does need addressed, does need addressed now because of that piece. And that's why Director Director England made the comment about, you know, moving towards a single use. You know, as we started to talk through this and you think back to to our time in schools and and even, you know, what locker rooms and and those things did look like. I mean, it's a different time and and moving towards single use just does make sense for for so many reasons. Forget about this topic that is kind of a part of this now, you know, the the trans topic. Void of that, I actually think good movement towards single use bathrooms is just prudent. I mean, we're in a very. I mean, we're in a very litigious society. And, you know, eliminating some of that potential for a school, for a parent, for students, any of that risk, to me, makes a lot, just makes a lot of sense. Void of the, void of the the gender topic here, I think where we're moving just does make make good sense. And the timing now, this, this is a, it's, it's a topic that is just getting more and more attention. So even if this is a baby step towards something and people are clear as to why we're doing is not about dividing, it's more about creating, you know, creating a a safe environment for all. That that again, I I'll go back to that safe environment clarity for those people that are trying to oversee this so that they stay in good legal standing. And then and then for parents and students, so they really understand they don't step into the wrong thing. And I say step in, just they don't make the wrong decision based on what they know is the process and policy. Students today do not know what that is today. That walk in this school, they would not know what, if there is some difference as to whether they can or can't use a certain facility. It's it's an unknown. It's just an unknown.
Anything else? I'm sure we can, can you, can we could discuss this for a long time and we have an opportunity next week as well. Without presuming, I I sense that that we need to move this to discussion. As I'm seeing some head nods. Okay, so we will move this to discussion for next week. And in the interim, if we could, if admin could get some work on on the timing issue. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. I really do appreciate it, everyone. Any other questions or discussion on the curriculum items? Director England?
Yes, I read through the curriculum and felt like most of it was very appropriate. I did have a concern about the biology curriculum on page fourteen. Under learning targets, it says students, this is quote, students will be able to argue evidence that supports the theory of evolution, end quote. My concerns are twofold. One is, I think it's a disingenuous thing to only find evidence that supports a theory that makes it a fact. I think solutions to this would be students need to argue evidence for and against evolution. And the second is, we're not teaching our students to be critical thinkers if they only examine one theory. So I think a solution to that would be to expose students to several theories regarding the origins of life and have them find evidence for and against those theories. So I'm requesting that the biology curriculum be updated before it's presented for approval next week.
I'd like to comment on that. As a person with biology background, there is no scientific evidence that discredits the theory of evolution. In a science class, we keep it based on science. I know that this curriculum was based upon what was recommended by the IU. This is very standard science curriculum. And theories that negate evolution are not scientifically based. And so they do not belong in a science course. They could be taught in a religions course, but they do not belong in a science course because there is no scientific evidence to support that.
I'd like to make a comment as well. I'm going to say this as politely as I possibly can. But what you just said is totally wrong. Creationism can be proved by science and has been proved by science. You have your opinion, I have my opinion. And reviewing the curriculum in for grade seven, eight, nine, and ten, I guess biology is for grade ten. There's number of comments about natural selection, evolution theory, Big Bang theory in for the ninth grade, evolution and climate change for the eighth grade, natural selection theory and common ancestors for seventh grade. One thing that did point out that stuck out to me was in grade eight, there was one of the, one of the parts of the curriculum explained that students would be able to form their own opinions. And so I guess my question is, I'm not necessarily, although I don't agree with it, I'm not necessarily opposed to students knowing about these theories. But my concern is if a student has a different theory or a different opinion, will they be graded upon their forming their own opinion based on science and the scientific process? Or will they be graded for not, i- if they don't agree or come in alignment with these proposed theories? So, you know, I I would just like to see an opportunity for our students, like Director England mentioned, about, you know, giving our students the opportunity for critical thinking. Allow them to review the evidence and allow them to form their own opinion based on the evidence that's presented to them. And whether that fault, whether that opinion falls in line with with the curriculum or proposed curriculum or whatever the teacher thinks, I'm hoping that the students are graded based on how they form their opinions rather than providing the, a regurgitated answer.
I'd like to follow up with that, with the comment, with all due respect, that scientists do not use the word prove. Scientists never say these results prove X, Y, or Z because we know that science continues. We're never finished. And so we would never, a real scientist would never set conclude that we have proven anything, especially creationism. And concerns about opinions, science is not based on opinion. Science is based on evidence and the scientific method. And so the concerns about students having a different opinion, that's not a science topic. We could have opinions on how to fix, how to negate negate climate change or work with climate change. But thing, we, we, we can't have an opinion that's not based on scientific evidence.
I think I need to, because we're getting into the weeds on on science curriculum right now. This has been debated among many school boards throughout history and throughout the nation. You know, we each have our own opinions. We can each do our own scientific research and study. I think there are multiple valid positions here. The issue here is that we have a correct, a curriculum that was proposed and and endorsed by the administration, recommended for approval. The curriculum was developed in accordance with IU. I think at this point, we're getting a little far afield if we're talking about potential modifications to the curriculum. But I think there have been good questions that have been raised, particularly regarding academic freedom and some of the other things. I think those questions are fine to pose for the administration regarding this curriculum. I think at this point, next week, the option that we have is to vote yes or no on the curriculum based upon what has been proposed and recommended. Now, when we go through the curriculum development process, I think that's the time when when these issues are are best raised. I'm open to other considerations on that. Director England, I understand your position. Absolutely understand it. If if there's maybe some question of clarification that we can get from administration based upon those concerns, I think that's something we could submit to administration for clarification within the curriculum. But I think as it stands right now, this is a matter of voting for or against this one piece of curriculum. Does that make sense?
It does. I guess my question would be, isn't, what what part does the board play in development of curriculum? I mean, how do we know when that process is happening? Isn't that what this is a result of? We don't really play a role in the formulation of that, correct?
So the board's role for curriculum is to approve curriculum.
Okay.
That that is raised to us. It is not necessarily the board's role to develop curriculum. The board has an opportunity during curriculum development to become engaged as individual board members if we if we choose to do so.
We were, I mean, we weren't necessarily informed of when this was taking place and when the meetings were, what was going on of of how we can get involved with that.
Well, so for for clarification on that, the board did approve a curriculum cycle two years ago. And we knew in the cycle when that curriculum would be developed. I'm not closing debate on this. I I want you to know I'm not closing debate on this, but I think we're kind of at a procedural impasse at this point. Th- this would require us to go back and redraft curriculum. And and I think there's another, there's another concern that I personally have. And that is requiring requiring a, a teacher to advance a scientific theory that the courts have already clearly said schools cannot actively promote. So to require a teacher to promote that theory. And for the record, for the record, I believe that there is scientific evidence that challenges, that challenges evolution. I believe those things do exist, but I I think we're running into a problem of requiring a teacher to advance a theory other than evolution, whether we like it or not, based on the current state of the law. I am also, though, very interested in the question of academic freedom for a student. And and I think that that is an important question and perhaps an important question for clarification on this curriculum. Does the curriculum require a student to to adhere to that, that belief at the risk of their grade? I think is a fair question.
And to address that more specifically, I'm sure the administration can talk about how this curriculum is implemented relative to student academic freedom. But I can say with certainty that the school code recognizes a student request for exemption from specific instruction on the basis of religious belief. So that maintains the separation of church and state that I think your board president was talking about, but also gives an option for when curriculum is passed, but it's in conflict. Specific instruction within that con, that curriculum is in conflict with someone's religious beliefs. There is a process under the school code for an individual to be exempted from that specific instruction. And I can go over that in more detail with the administration. And that's something that happens in in other situations, for example, sex education.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Say. I I do think that that would be a valuable thing for the board to seek that counsel between now and the and the regular board meeting next week. We will move this item to discussion, curriculum. Now, I guess the the procedural question I have is, can we, can we move just the biology curriculum to discussion?
You can.
We can. Okay. Is there, is there a sense from from the directors to move any of the other items of curriculum to discussion next week?
My concerns would be grade seven through ten.
Seven through ten on the.
Which would include biology.
Okay. Then we will move grade seven through ten to discussion for next week. In the interim, I think it will behoove us as a board to explore both the legal framework of of requests for accommodation based on religious exemption, as well as questions regarding academic freedom pursuant to this policy. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I I just want to say that I think the detail that you know, that's, that is being put forth in in all these curriculums is is good stuff. I mean, I don't think in my time I've seen it. So I think the work is good. And I think even though this process, you know, kind of at the last minute, we're asking questions, challenging it. It feels like we're moving in the right direction in terms of 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 developing curriculum, having some input, some say into it. And I don't think that was the case years, years ago. So despite the the few challenges here, which I I don't disagree with, I think some clarity needs put forth on those, the process itself is is good. There's good stuff in there for sure.
And just for the board's information, so that you can read between now and next meeting, your policy one oh five point two covers twenty-two P A code, section four point four, which outlines the right to religious exemption from specific instruction. So it it provides a pretty fair reading of that along with the legal citations.
Great, thank you so much. Yep.
I just want to make one comment that I know our teachers worked very hard in developing this curriculum. And that as a board, I think it is important that we leave curriculum development and the details of that up to the experts in the field. Our teachers have the degrees in education. Most of us sitting up here do not. Our teachers may have master's degrees in science. Most of us sitting up here do not. And so I think it is important that we leave the details of that curriculum to those with the most most knowledge of that content area.
I'll just say that I completely agree with allowing the teachers to make the curriculum. I mean, that is their job. But if I'm being asked to approve something, I need to fully agree with it before I can approve it, or at least have my questions answered before I can approve anything.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. Any other items from item nine that need to be on discussion for next week? Okay. Mr. East?
Thank you. We'll move on to items under number ten, human relations. Ten point one includes the substitute list for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Item ten point two includes our summer resignations, including Kenton Belmont, Donna Burt, Reba Kinser. Ginny Long is going to retire at the end of the school year. Her letter is a little early in the process. James Sider, Roy Wall, and Carolyn Weltmeyer. We wish them all well in their future endeavors. Item ten point three are people that were asking to join our team. That includes Tabitha Backenstoss, Roger Bailey, Caitlin Butler, Courtney Reitz, Samantha Roy, Philip Lum, and Mark Hubbard. We've received a leave request that has met the board policies. The request is for employee number twenty-three eighty-nine, effective for August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Ten point five is the annual reappointment of school police officer David Lawver. We also have attached under the administrative section his court petition that's come back from the courts just this week. Ten point six, Alyssa Graff and Adam Molinaro both have earned tenure. Ten point seven assigns mentors to our new teachers for the school year. In some cases, they're prorated because they're continuing from the previous school year. Ten point eight are the list of professional staff that have met the CBA obligations for column movement. Ten point nine includes the list, the extensive lists of mental health teams and other appointed positions related to the district on an annual basis. Ten point ten includes information about the classified mentorship program. If you'll recall, this was a presentation that H R Director Lauren Bruce presented to you. I I don't recall exactly what month it was, but it's essentially a program. You'll recall that we do a fairly decent job of mentoring and bringing onboarding of our professional staff. This is now a program aimed at supporting our classified staff and coming on board and with the hopes that a little more support on the front end will lead to longer employment on the back end. And you can see the details there. What's presented in front of you is the program design, which people will receive training to be the mentors. In order, and by attending the training, they will earn a one hundred fifteen dollar stipend to be trained. That training program, I believe, is going to repeat every three to five years. I'm not sure exactly the frequency of it, but once trained, you're not always trained, but once trained, you you can be trained. This is a continual cycle so that we have people available to fill the classified position mentor positions. Any questions with items under number ten, human relations?
It's a lot there. Appreciate it. I just want to make an observation that I appreciate that we have hired people to fill vacancies already. That that is a, that is an outstanding success in my mind.
Agreed.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, we will leave item ten on the consent agenda for next week then.
Under night, item eleven, we have information items for the board, including the health and safety plan. It's just a note that the health and safety plan has been reviewed. This is a requirement for our continued grant funding under the ESA program. So that review has occurred and no changes are being recommended at this time. The secondary building was identified for eighth grade nap testing or NAP testing. National Assessment of Educational Progress Letter is attached for your review. This testing was done, it might have been five years ago for us here, maybe a little longer. It's it's a program that we've been involved in in the past. It's a. Been involved in in the past. It's a random selection by P D E. Students get randomly selected. I believe it's a group of twenty-five for the testing. They bring the computers in, they they handle it all. That'll be forthcoming information for students that are selected, get sent out to the parents. And it's handled. It's normally in the winter. I'm not sure what month specifically they'll be here. Item C are is a list of the books that have been weeded from what was the Fredericksburg Library. And item D are all of the change orders approved by Dr. Messinger. You'll recall that the board authorized him to approve change orders that occurred between our. Well, that started to occur over the summer so we could move forward with the. Building and and being able to get into the building on time. Which I'm happy to state that it looks like we are on track. All of the electrical. Deficiencies or late comings have more or less corrected themselves. The very final panel. Is at the vendor right now and will be shipped on site. I expect it to be here. Either Friday or Monday and installed shortly thereafter. So. For all the worry we had going into it, it's it's finally come together and and I think we can worry a little bit less. There's still, you know, minor things that have to be done, but. We're coming down the home stretch.
Hard to believe that a process that started in twenty twenty is finally. Coming to fruition. Thank you. Any other comments, discussion on item eleven? Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Okay, hearing none, we will see everyone next Tuesday at our regular meeting. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.